All right, KBev is going live in thirty seconds. All right, KBev is going, all right, KBev is going live on air in ten, nine, eight, seven, six, five, four, three, I got it, two.
Good evening, welcome to our regular Board of Education meeting, it is January seventeenth, two thousand and twenty-three, welcome to New Year, everyone, call the meeting to order, and I would like to ask Miranda Weinens to lead us in the pledge. Thank you very much, Miranda. Dr. Bergy?
Thank you, Mr. So, please join in a moment of silence as we mourn the loss of a beloved retired Horace Mann math teacher Cheryl Katz, who passed away on Sunday, January eighth, two thousand and twenty-three, after a lengthy battle with many illnesses, she was at peace surrounded by family and lifelong friends, Cheryl brought the love of and her caring humanity and one-of-a-kind manner of gentleness to generations of mathematicians, Cheryl was to work in BHUSD where she taught at Horace Mann for thirty-nine years, from nineteen seventy-five until her retirement in two thousand and fourteen, she was Horace Mann's inaugural Apple awardee when the Apple Awards began in nineteen eighty-six, eighty-seven school year, the relationships that she has formed with her cherished colleagues, her students and families, live on vividly, and she was most typically described by her former students as a teacher whose class was tough, but whom they loved dearly, please join us in a moment of silence as we remember, reflect, and honor the life of Cheryl Katz.
Thank you.
Thank you, Dr. Bergy, I need a motion to approve the agenda.
Motion to the agenda.
All in favor? Aye. Opposed? Motion carries unanimously, Dr. Bergy, report of closed session action?
Yes, President Margot, in closed session, the board approved. Yes, President Margot, in closed session, the board approved 5 to 0, the settlement for California State Labor Commission KRCI CM 857921, in closed session, the board approved 5 to 0, OAH case 2022 110634, and in closed session, the board approved 5 to 0, the stipulated expulsion agreement for student number 10477.
Thank you, sir, I want to introduce, and my pleasure to introduce, Principal Craig Bugbee from Horace Mann, with our kickoff our teacher-student spotlight.
Good evening, and to Dr. UCI, Board, and Beverly Hills community. One of the perks of working in Beverly Hills, and living and attending one of our schools, at the elementary level, we do have specialist teachers which no other district has, so thank you, School Board, for providing that to us at the elementary schools, and we look forward to continuing these programs, with us tonight for our teacher spotlight is Horace Mann art teacher Tiffany Graham, with a few special guests.
Hello, everyone, I am Ms. Graham, and I am very a key teacher at Horace Mann, if I had to describe the learning that happens in the Horace Mann Art Studio in a single word, I think it would be joyful, there is a balance between rigor and joy, as student artists tackle challenging concepts and standards, like one-point perspective in fifth grade, while at the same time experiencing the joy of making something with their own two hands, something unique and something that is entirely theirs, all children come to Inca Garden with their very greatest superpower, you see right in the middle of that sign, their greatest superpower being imagination, that is already in place when they come to me, it is then my privilege to protect that, help them develop it, and define their own uniqueistic voice, by the time they leave in fifth grade, they will have learnt a wide array of techniques and sets, use of rules, art history, but most importantly, they will have their visual ability, and learn to use their artist eyes, this is what we do in the studio, the little ones put on their artist eyes every time when they come in, as a reminder, their eyes to see the beauty that surrounds them everywhere, everywhere they go, every day, and this is a gift that they will take with them for the rest of their life, and that is my, my, my greatest, greatest privilege, I have with me tonight, the extremely talented Huskies, who are going to share with you some of their amazing artwork, first up, we have Marissa Wynans, who's in first grade, and she is going to share her peek-a-boo self-portrait, come on up, Marissa.
Hi, my name is Marissa Leo Wynans, and I'm in first grade, my, this is my peek-a-boo portrait, and when you lift it up, inside, all the things I love the most are in my mind, I love gymnastics, I love my family and friends, french fries, and art.
And next up, we have Laura Fiallo in third grade, who's going to share two pieces of art, her sunflowers and her family totem.
Hi, my name is Laura Fiallo, and this is, I'm in the third grade, and this is my sunflower Still Life, and I used my artist's superpowers, shading depth and overlap, I also used chalk and oil pastels, and to color it. This is, this is my family totem, and our spirit animal is a wolf, because wolves stay in packs together, and we always stay together.
And lastly, we have our artist Ethan Waterman in fourth grade, and he's also going to share two pieces of art with you, the first one is an intaglio print, and the second one is a very expressive painting.
This is my intaglio print of a still life, in this print, I learned about texture and lines, this is my reflection, oh, this is, yeah, I finished. This is my reflection painting, in this painting, I learned about the narcissist myth and the reflection to create this work. I love art at Horace Mann because Ms. Graham is a phenomenal teacher, art is my passion, and Ms. Graham encourages us to be creative and explore new mediums.
Well, thank you to those three outstanding artists, I wish I could show you all the artists at Horace Mann, but we had to limit it to these three amazing kids, last thing I want to say is that the creativity of the Horace Mann Art Program is not limited to the confines of the art studio, we have started something, which is community trees, so we painted the tree in the art studio in the fall, put it up in the hallway at Horace Mann across from the office, and invited students, staff, and their families to come and fill out a fall leaf with a message about kindness, now I brought a box of some of these leaves tonight at random, and I'd like each board member to read one message from a leaf written by a student at Horace Mann.
You want to read one too, we're still distributing.
Sure, I'm sorry I didn't follow the directions and give it to the board, but I selected, I show kindness by welcoming new people into the classroom.
Thank you.
I'll go to, Alex, do you have one? Okay, you're up.
Spread positive energy. This is from Charlotte, you can always find kindness even in the darkest moments.
My friends who help me when I'm having a bad.
Be kind to others, be kind to yourself, be kind to the earth.
Kindness is not what you do, but who you are, be kind.
Showing love and appreciation is kindness, caring for others is kind.
Thank you all. Right now, we have, there's a picture of the kindness tree, you can see how, there's so many leaves, you can no longer see the tree, so that's how it looked before winter break happened, we created it on November 13th for World Kindness Day, currently, we have the Our Winter Tree, so we repurposed it, and the Winter Peace Tree is adorned with messages written onto white doves by the students, staff, and families at Horace Mann, and then coming in the fall, we're going to have a gratitude tree, which will be adorned with colorful blossoms, we have that to look forward to, I want to thank all the amazing art angels, those are the parents who volunteer, and grandparents, who volunteer in the Horace Mann Art Studio on a weekly basis, they help and encourage the kids, and are a wonderful part of the program, I also want to thank the tireless support from, thank the Horace Mann PTA for the tireless support they give the program, so thank you, Emily, she's out there, president over at PTA, one of the presidents, and BHEF, who helps so much with our funding, so we are incredibly fortunate, I am so lucky to be the art teacher, and now we are looking forward to our elementary art show at City Hall, which opens on May 8th, and it will be a collaboration between the Husky Artists and the artists from Hawthorne, who are being taught by the amazing Elizabeth Federman, so we have that to look forward to, and also, hopefully, a school-wide mural, which should be completed by the beginning of next year, so, thank you all for having me.
If my colleagues have any comments, now would be the time.
Thank you, Marissa, Laura, and Ethan for coming today and showing us your beautiful art, I hope the three of you continue doing art in your free time and in school, and thank you so much, Ms. Graham, for everything you do to enrich our art program.
I agree, congratulations to Marissa and Laura and Ethan, thank you for sharing your art with us and your passion, I hope that your art and your exploration with art continues for a lifetime, and thanks to you, Ms. Graham, for, for inspiring that, and I can't also thank everyone, I have to also thank our community of parents and our PTA for the support that they have for the arts and for our students, so that we can have these programs, I really appreciate it, we're so fortunate at our district to have art programs like this, and there's many different levels that our community supports the arts, so thank you very much, and I'm really proud of you.
Anybody else?
No comment, just thank you for sharing your special stuff with us.
I just want to say how lucky we are to have such an imagination and such a creative person at the school, and to have such wonderful teachers, and especially, I want to congratulate Ethan, Marissa, and Laura on the wonderful presentation, and thank you for sharing it with us, I would also like to tell you that, that you will become the budding artists of the future, and we look forward to, because you are, you've just been so creative, and so much there, that the variety is amazing, and thank you for sharing, and thank you for being here tonight, and I am so grateful to be able to see one of the programs that we have with our specials, sharing tonight what goes on in the school, thank you.
Thank you, you know, I want to say that one of the great things about Beverly Hills, I have the opportunity to look at a bunch of different schools, LAUSD, Glendale, all over, and there are a lot of class, there are a lot of grades in which art is simply dealt with by the homeroom teacher, which is a lot of credit to that teacher, but the fact that we have a dedicated talented artist, Ms. Graham, who actually is teaching the kids, I don't know if parents or the larger LA community knows how lucky we are to have that, and not just have, have it be something that the teacher has to accomplish, but it's actually a dedicated craft from a professional who went to, you know, finishing school for it, so thank you, and I was very happy to see what you guys shared tonight.
And piggybacking on what Dr. Stern said, I was one of those LA 4th grade teachers that had to teach art, so I would have loved to have a Tiffany Graham in my school, and Ethan, I guess you and four of us up here have the same tailor, so, looking sharp, looking sharp, thank you, thank you, Craig, for this, and thank you, students, for being here tonight, ye shall be released. Okay, I would like to bring up Mr. Dustin Seaman.
Good evening, Board of Education and Beverly Hills community, it's with great honor that I'm actually going to force five of our excellent teachers to come stand alongside me, so Ellen Poltrich, first grade teacher at Hawthorne, if you wouldn't mind coming up, Dr. Michael Sherman, our district instructional coach, Jennifer Goldsby, who is our computer science teacher and math teacher at the high school, Elena Riley, who is our math teacher and department chair at the high school, and Pamela Kramer, who is our makerspace teacher at Horace Mann. So to be able to do this justice, I do want to read just a snitbit from the National Board Certification website, just to make sure that both the community and the Board of Education and those in the crowd completely understand what these teachers undertook, this crazy adventure about two and a half years ago, the National Board for Professional Teaching Standards is the most respected certification available to teachers, and was designed to develop, retain, and recognize accomplished teachers, and to generate ongoing improvement in schools nationwide, earning certification is a rigorous process that requires teachers to demonstrate commitment to students and learning, know the subjects they teach and how to teach them, be responsible for monitoring and managing student learning, think systematically about the practice and learn from expertise, and be members of learning communities through the completion of four components over a two-to-three-year completion process, these components that they had to go through tackle and score high enough to earn the certification, component one is a four-part exam that measures content knowledge, component two is a classroom-based portfolio that measures the teacher's ability to differentiate instruction and meet the needs of all learners, component three is a classroom-based video portfolio that demonstrates the teacher's ability to engage our students, our learners, and create impactful learning experiences for those students, and last but not least, after all that, they still had to complete a fourth component, which measures the teacher's effectiveness, to really be reflective practitioners in their, in their areas of content, so whether it be a multiple subject, whether that be computer science and math, so overall, undertaking successfully completing this rigorous process not only demonstrates accomplishment in teaching, but it impacts student learning for us, in our kids, in our school district, strengthening the teaching practice, but also builds leadership, and so I would like to, one, thank you five, we had six, Carly Verstegen, two from Horace Mann, if you're listening, in Wisconsin, unfortunately, but fortunately, she had the opportunity to move back, but she too also received National Board Certification, I do want to thank the Board of Education, again, just two and a half years ago, we went to the California School Board Association's conference in San Diego, walking through the vendors, Dr. Bregge, myself, and some other cabinet members met Linda from Stanford University, and encouraged us to start creating a cohort here in BHUSD, and we set out to do that, initially, we had close to 16 members stand, now six have completed, and we're still have about 10 that, between Dr. Michael Sherman supporting, we now have four other support teacher leaders to help, to complete the process, and we actually are utilizing our Professional Development Day on February 17th, to even, they're hosting a panelist discussion to encourage more teachers to participate in the cohort to get National Board Certification, to say this is an understatement, there are very few, we, before this cohort, we had one other teacher that had National Board Certification outside those that stand here today, and I know that the board has allowed us resources to be able to complete this, but I do want to give them a round of applause, because this is a huge undertaking, and it's a direct impact to our student learning in our classrooms, so thank you all.
Dustin, I know you wanted to get a photo before you leave, but I'll let my colleagues make their comments first, once again, colleagues, you don't have to be pressured to make a comment, you're welcome to make a comment, and I'll just go in order of the horseshoe.
Okay, I just wanted to say, thank you so much for going above and beyond and doing this training to better our education of students, and also just a special thank you to Ms. Goldsby and Ms. Riley, who I've, who I've had the pleasure of having this year, Ms. Riley, I have currently for calculus, and that's an oddly basic subject, and both of you are incredible teachers, so thank you. incredible teachers. So, thank you so much.
I just want to thank you for your dedication and your passion and to take your professional development to this next level, not only for yourselves, but most importantly, for us, for our district, and for our students. I really appreciate it. It really helps us move forward to the goals that we've established as educational excellence. And I would say that this is educational excellence. So, thank you very much.
Just thank you for me also.
One big hand of applause and congratulations to all of you. While teaching, you still achieved this during the time that you were in school and working. I'm so impressed. And I can't tell you how glad I am that you are a part of our school district. Thank you.
Congratulations. I want to say that I've always been in the field of education, and I've always taken it very seriously as a craft that requires a heck of a lot of intelligence, a lot of learning, a lot of reiterative process of perfecting our craft. And a lot of people don't know that. And I think that, you know, putting, one way to put it on the map is to gain national certification for it. And, you know, there's a great deal of learning and creativity and innovation. And all of you clearly represent that. And thank you for taking it to the next level.
One way to set ourselves apart as a great district is this. And the more faculty that we have that engage in this process, the better it'll be. It's leading by example. It's saying, we're not done learning. You're never done learning. We're going to keep getting better. You're going to keep getting better. And it's the best way to do it. So, thank you all for going through that process.
Also, I'd like to extend my congratulations. And as Mr. Seaman had mentioned, having one teacher with National Board Certification in the district, you know, that's very telling at how difficult this is to achieve, and how easily people can get discouraged with a lot of the back and forth. You know, you're heavily scrutinized through this process. I do really want to thank you, because one thing I learned today that I didn't know before is your willingness to then give back. And I think that this is such a daunting process. People hear National Boards, and they're like, no thanks, I just don't have time. But it is a reality, and it does change practice for you, practice for us. But I think that having our first kind of new cohort now to lead the way and show others what is possible, because we have such great teachers in our school district, I think having that opportunity to talk with you, to have them get kind of walked through this process is going to be really important. We get awards, and we've got high achievement. But to see that you're going to give back to your colleagues in our district, I'm really, really proud of that. And knowing that today, thank you for that.
Thank you. I'm sorry? Hallway. Excuse us for a moment. We are being commanded by the wonderful Rebecca.
Sit tight, more to come. Gets better from here.
I don't have to technically adjourn, right, or recess?
No.
We don't.
Jennifer Sayata Thomas, Bobby.
I will, of course.
And we're back. Okay, I need a motion for the consent calendar.
Are there any being pulled?
Yes. Dr. Stern has that?
Yes. I'll make a motion to approve the consent calendar with the exceptions of items G, H, and N.
I'll second.
Thank you very much. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Opposed? Motion carries. Item G. Can I have a motion for a discussion?
I'll move to approve the contract with school innovations and achievement.
Can I have a second?
I'll second.
Thank you. Okay. Discussion.
Well, I pulled this. Rochelle, you pulled it as well?
Three of us pulled it, so.
Well, unfortunately, Laura's not here tonight. I was hoping that she could get up and speak to this item. It has to do with absenteeism and with the rates of that, with the rates of absenteeism on an increase, actually across California. This is a program for supporting our tracking of absenteeism and addressing that issue. But I'm, because she's not here tonight, I would actually propose that we table this item until she is here, so that she can provide more information for not just the board, but for the community. I know that she did provide responses to our board questions, but I think it would benefit the community to hear about this topic, because it is very much a topic that's with all schools across the state.
I would agree with my colleague, Mary Wells. I would like to see this as, because it would not be able to present it in a way that everybody could understand it. I think it would be nice to pull it. I think I was unaware that there was a problem and that there was something that was going on. And I just thought that we should maybe study this a little bit more before we approve it. So, that was my comment, and that was the reason that I had pulled it.
That sounds reasonable to me.
Dr. Breggy, did you want to add anything before we?
So, yeah, I mean, many of us could speak to this issue. But I think that the board has raised some questions about, you know, just getting a better understanding of what our chronic absenteeism is in the school district. And then also kind of share with you kind of what our current process is and how this would help us. And, you know, that's absolutely not a problem. So, we could do that. And then we could also, in the meantime, before our next meeting, prepare some additional information for you, so that you can get a better idea of how the system would be used.
And this would be, as I was, I knew, this is a new plan, number one. Number two was, and then was it budgeted and so on. So, these are some of the issues that I had also.
Great. We'd be happy to answer those questions. I think this is a great idea.
Okay. Who, Mary, you made the motion. Do you want to amend the motion to table it?
Sure. I'll amend the motion to table this item.
Who seconded? Do you accept that amendment?
Yes.
Okay. So, the motion has been made to table item G, made by Mrs. Wells, seconded by Dr. Stern, and then amended by both. All, any further discussion? Okay. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Opposed? Rochelle, did you vote on that?
I did.
Oh, you did. Okay. Thank you. Okay, motion carries. Thank you. That item will be tabled to a further meeting. Let's move to item H.
I move for the approval of the Partners in Practice proposal for elementary math and professional development.
I'll second.
Thank you very much. Mrs. Wells, I think you pulled this?
Yes, I did.
Okay, go ahead.
I actually would like to ask Dustin if he could just speak about this item. I was wondering also if we shouldn't also look at this at the same time with item N, since they're both related to math. So, I'm not sure what you guys think about that. But perhaps, maybe you could just talk about this and how it also relates to item N, which is the creative mathematics. And it's really about, you know, the math program, what the professional development is for the math program, how you're approaching that. And if you could just speak to that, so that everyone in the community can hear. Because this is an item that we've identified in our strategic plan. We also identified it when we had an update in November about where we are in math in the lower grades. So, I think this is a great thing for you to speak about.
So, one second Dustin. So, I think what we'll do then is if either anybody has questions on H or N, let's ask them now. We'll vote on H, then we'll vote on N. Okay?
Excellent. Thank you for the opportunity to be able to speak on behalf of both of these items. The items do basically kind of go in tandem. During our initial creation of the strategic plan, we, Board of Education Cabinet, site administration, and even just our district, identified that we do score really high in our ELA performance, and we would like to score higher in math. We score still high compared to a lot of the school districts in the state. But we know that we can do better, and we are striving for excellence. And so, two things that happened since the creation of strategic plan, we started to unpack, what is it that our teachers need from resources and tools, instructional aid, to be able to, one, make sure we're all using the same language, we're all moving towards that same goal of every student's one year's growth in one year's time. And so, through that process of being able to unpack that during the fall, we were able to then start going out and looking for professional developers that would be able to assist not only site administration, education services, our teacher leaders within the elementary, on getting us all on the same page, creating that one structure of we're all utilizing the same vocab. So, if a student were to move from one class to the other class, are they using the same language? Because we do a lot of small group instruction. But then also, some toolboxes to add to our teachers' toolboxes already, some tools to add to their toolbox, to make sure that they feel really well-equipped to help us tackle and bring our students out of the pandemic and raise our math scores. So, you'll see that the two different proposals, one is associated with UCLA. We did vet out many other organizations. We talked to Loyola Marymount, we talked to USC Administration, our district instructional coach, our elementary coordinator. We vetted out a lot of different people that had worked in other school districts. And that's where we got both of these professional development opportunities. So, bowls and the practice and partnership and practice. Sorry. And so, we were able to vet that out. And obviously, it aligns with our strategic plan for professional development. We want to be able to utilize both of them. One is really more tools-focused, and one is more language-focused. How are we talking to students about math? How are we engaging even our parents in math? So, the first item is that, is we're utilizing and leveraging that to create the common language across all the grade levels, across administration, across the whole district. We're using those as well as for our math night that we're going to host this spring for the first time. And then the second one is really around some of those tools for the foundational levels, so that TK through 2nd grade. What are some tangible tool items that the teachers can utilize today to start improving our students' math instruction, or retention in math? Long-winded way, but really great opportunities. Yeah.
Any other questions?
I have a question.
Okay, go ahead.
I have a couple of questions, actually. So, the Partners in Practice, I understand that is planned for, like you're setting up a, like a training model, like a math leadership team. So, I think it's great if you could talk about that a little bit, that what the thinking is, is that you're having this leadership, this math team get trained so they can then train the other teachers. So, if I understood correctly, you're having one teacher from each grade level that will be attending this professional development?
Correct. It's a two-day professional development, and we are doing Train the Trainer. One of the things that is still kind of an issue coming, we're still in the pandemic, but being able to be back in school is pulling teachers away from their everyday classrooms and instructing our students. So, we're trying to get really creative in the way that we're able to provide professional development for our teachers. So, you'll see things, and teachers at home have already saw, we're offering after-school, where we're able to compensate them for their time, but being able to pull them, like tomorrow, from 3:30 to 5:30, we're offering an elementary math PD here at the district office, you know, and we're going to be able to do that after school. So, we're trying to be creative, because one, we have a sub-s shortage, but two, we're trying not to pull our teachers away from the classroom and being with their students. So, we're also looking at Wednesday mornings and our Professional Development Day, which is February 17th. So, we've identified an internal math leadership team, one per grade level from each site, and our administration and district office, to be able to work with them, to be able to create that common language, and then be able to utilize us as teacher leaders, similar to what we mentioned about the National Board candidates. They're now our teacher leaders going out and being able to promote and bring that excitement from our other teachers onboard to continue. So, we're doing that exact same model for the first one, for the second one. Again, thinking outside of the box, is we're offering that on non-attendance days. So, again, we're offering that professional development, and obviously, being able to compensate our teachers for coming in on their off-hours to be able to gain that professional development, to help us move our strategic plan forward. And again, it's a win-win, where we're also not pulling away again from that classroom instruction. So, we're trying to really think outside of the box around providing the professional development.
So, I understand that the Partners in Practice, it's K through 12, that's your leadership team, it's covering those grade levels. And then for creative math, it's K through 12. That's, is it mandatory for teachers that are K through 12, and then it's open to all teachers, or?
So, both are elementary.
Right.
So, that's our primary focus. So, it's only not our full leadership team. So, it'd be like myself, our elementary education coordinator, our assistant principals and principals at both sites, and then our, kind of our teacher leadership internal team, one teacher per grade level.
That's the K through 5 one.
Yeah, but both. And so, that's to set the stage for K through 5. And then the earlier one for the foundation, which is the second one that we're discussing as well, those are the tools that are for our TK through 2nd grade staff.
Right. So, is that mandatory for the TK through 2nd?
It's not mandatory.
Or it's optional for them?
It is optional for them, because we are doing it outside of the workday. But we hope to build those teacher leaders, to then be able to utilize them, to be able to go in on Wednesdays and deliver professional development. Because remember, we have very small windows on Wednesdays to deliver professional development to our staff. And so, we want to spend as much time as we can with those teacher leaders. Again, it is optional, because it is outside of the workday, to train them and then empower them to be alongside of us. So, that way, it's not Dustin's coming in all the time and saying something, or Principal Cabor is. It's a divide ownership over the process.
Right. From the Partners in Practice, that leadership team that you're developing, is there a goal set for when they will then train the others by a date certain? Or is it not that formalized?
Absolutely. Like the following day.
I love it.
Yeah. No, we've been thinking this very strategically, is one, finding the correct partners, which we did. We vetted out so many. Also, then, working with the instructional leadership teams at each of the sites to determine who wants to be a part of this process, right? Getting those people that are really excited about learning, and then being able to take that and help us break it down, to make sure that then it kind of spreads throughout the campuses. And so, this, then from, you know, like from the training, we already have the timeline of implementation. Like, when is the next steps? Where's the next meetings? Those types of things have already been thought out and done, all the way up into summer workshops. So, this doesn't just end during 2nd semester. You'll see this work continuing into summer workshops, all the way into fall as well. And that'll be part of two of our strategic plan updates, how did this go, right? And then where are we at in that implementation of these professional development opportunities for our staff? And then by then, we'll also have our parent night, our math elementary parent night. So, we'll invite you guys all to that as well.
Right. I really appreciate all the steps you're taking to really address the math. So, I think this is great, and I really appreciate it. Thank you. Thank you.
Rochelle?
I read somewhere, and I'm trying to recall, there are a couple of questions that I have, and of course, they were answered. And I just want the people out there to know that this particular thing says it will be funded by the Horace Mann Title I. It will be available, and it is being implemented throughout the district as both Hawthorne and Horace Mann. And I wanted the parents to understand that it is a way of us bringing it in to everybody. And of course, I am, as you know, I've always been on the math kick at the schools and importance of improving them. So I am so in favor of whatever we're doing, and I like the fact that we're going to be working on improving teachers, by teachers improving teachers also with our professional development. I did hear something, I read somewhere, and I'm a little bit confused by it, about the adoption. I saw somewhere 2013. And I don't understand if, are we on a 2013 adoption right now? Are we about to adopt again while we're picking books? I need some information on that.
Yep. So we are on a 2013 adoption. So the adoption committee actually convened under a different Board of Education, and Mr. President Margot was on the board at the time. The adoption came and was not approved at that time, so they stopped the adoption process.
Is that 2015?
It was 2016.
The one that came after, yeah.
Yep. And so that was under, so the state has an eight-year adoption cycle? And so they approved textbooks for an eight-year cycle. And so when that adoption came up in 2016, it was not approved prior to us. When we came in, at that point, we're utilizing an updated version of our 2013. By no means is it an old textbook that with like 27 kids' first names, you know, names in the inside cover, especially with technology. We have the updated version of it. We just haven't been able to go back out and vet, because then we did an ELA adoption, a social studies adoption, we just did our science adoption, and we're waiting for the new adoption list because of the new math framework. Regardless, if we support the math framework, we can't use general funds to purchase a textbook that isn't approved by the state. And so that's where we're at in the process, is we're, not just us, a lot of us in California are chomping at the bits to get ahold of that list. Because there's a great example I use with our teachers, and I'm stealing it from a colleague, is we could buy a used car today, right? We could buy a used car today, or we could wait a year and buy a brand-new car. So we're kind of waiting for that brand-new car, if that makes a little sense.
So the framework has not yet been approved, or it's just been approved?
No, it has not.
So then there's no way that they can adopt new textbooks that'll meet the framework until that framework is adopted, correct?
The list is out there. They just have to adopt the framework. So if you recall, the frameworks-
There's a list of books out there, a list of writers or the editions are out there. But we can't pick one until the framework, and then we can get the book.
And then they can release them to us, correct?
Do we have a timeframe on that yet?
Well, yeah, they're in their 60-day window again from public hearing. So it already went back to the committee, to the state board. And so we're waiting on the state board to finalize that decision. And again, and just reminding the community from a framework standpoint, it is exactly that, it's a framework. You can choose to pick and kind of choose what you decide that you want to deliver from. The instructional materials are all aligned to CASP. So the outcome of the instructional materials will do what we want them to do. And we are using up-to-date materials. We leverage our technology every day because of that, because the online textbooks update, and that's why it's so important. However, that specific adoption was since 2013, so it's time to get some new resources into our school.
Thank you for that explanation.
Yeah. And that's only for elementary. Our high school, we, I was like, where's our high school math department? We've adopted new textbooks along the way. And so TK through 8th grade is dictated by the state from an adoption list. 9th through 12th, we can go national searches.
Do you recall why the previous board in 2016 chose not to adopt?
I do not. I think there may be, the teachers may have selected one, and administration maybe selected a different, and they weren't able to come to an agreement on the instructional materials that they would have liked to put forward to a adoption process.
Okay, thank you.
So Dustin, are we looking for an increase in scores this year? This is all seems to be happening before the CASP.
Yep.
So the goal is that the effects of this development will happen immediately on this year's test?
Yeah, absolutely. I hate to use the word absolutely, I love absolutely. You know, we've already started, this is just one more cog. Yes, it's the intention. It's just one more cog in the wheel of what we've already been doing. So there already has been professional development going on through that process of unpacking our instruction with our teachers at each of the sites. We realized that there's an additional need, and this is the additional need.
Thank you.
Yeah.
Okay. So we're going to do item H first. All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries, thank you. And can I have a motion for N?
Approval of the agreement with, not the, N.
Creative mathematics.
Mathematics.
I'll second.
Go ahead.
I'll second.
Okay. Dr. Stern gets a second on that, thank you. Mrs. Marcus, any further discussion? All in favor? Aye. Opposed? Thank you, motion carries. Thank you very much, Dustin. And that takes us to reports. Ms. Alex Bowden, you're up.
So for my report tonight, I would like to welcome our ASB president, Ashley Jorovchi, who's here tonight to introduce to the board our newly-elected freshman class cabinet. So take it away. Hi, everyone. My name is Ashley Jorovchi. I'm Beverly High Student Body President. I'm so proud to introduce all of you to the brand-new ASB freshman cabinet, which is all girls this year. So first, we have freshman class president, Eliana Nativood. Eliana has been a part of ASB for two years, both at BVMS and now at Beverly Hills High School. She is part of the varsity cross-country team and the track-and-field team. On campus, she's also a member of the Jewish Student Union and Persian Student Union Clubs.
Hi. I'm Eliana Nativood. I'm the freshman president, and I'm looking forward to all the events and fundraisers we've planned.
Next, we have freshman class vice president, Ava Wiseman. In addition to her three years in involvement with student government, Ava is also a member of the girls' junior varsity volleyball team, the vice president of the volleyball club, a member of the Jewish club, and a recent transfer to BHUSD from Riverside.
Hi, thank you. My name is Ava Wiseman, and I am our freshman class of 2026 vice president. And I am so excited to be working with such an amazing class. And I guarantee that every day, it's just very exciting to be able to change our, to change our class and to make excite me, excite feel, or not excitable, you know, just to create such a cool environment for everyone.
So this year's freshman class treasurer is Cleo Paul. Unfortunately, she wasn't able to be here today. But in addition to her involvement at ASB, Cleo is also a student athlete. She's a part of the varsity cross-country team and the track-and-field team. She's also a member of the French Club. And finally, we have Charlotte Cave as freshman class representative. Charlotte's passion for leadership has led her to serve as freshman class representative. Additionally, she loves to dance and runs multiple of her own businesses. Charlotte envisions a successful year ahead, and is grateful to be a part of making BHHS a better place for all.
Hi, I'm Charlotte Cave. And basically what I just said, I'm really excited to be a part of the freshman cabinet, which is all girls, and I'm excited to make a difference.
Thank you guys so much for having us. Thank you, Alex, for inviting me, and I look forward to a successful rest of the year.
Thank you, guys. I just wanted to say thank you, each and every single one of you, for coming tonight. And also, I hope the three of you, well, four of you, continue your involvement with ASB throughout the rest of high school.
Was there anything else? Oh, fantastic. Dr. Bergy?
Good evening. Welcome, everyone. I want to be hopefully one of the last that says Happy New Year, but this is our first meeting, so I do want to extend a Happy New Year to all of our families, our staff, and to our Board of Education. We're a very unique profession that we have this opportunity to start over, get to refresh after break. And so I want to welcome everybody back. I'm going to cover several things this evening, and I'll move through them quickly. There are a few things that we are working on right now that I will provide you with some updates about our Kunheim Building and that schedule of finishing projects, our anti-bullying updates. I will have that for you soon, as well as an update on our elevator situation at the high school. And also, the board had asked me at the end of the year to start looking at some options for a construction committee. And my team is weighing a lot of those options. And at our next meeting, I will share a couple of ideas with the board to get your input on what we want our next construction committee to look like. I also have just a picture on here, just as a reminder. You know, taking breaks is just so healthy. This is the first time I haven't traveled in 23 years of a break, and really gave me an opportunity to reflect. And I think in something that Mrs. Wells said during our strategic planning about capturing every moment, is something that, you know, just going through phones, they're so accessible now, and many times we take pictures. We don't do anything with them. We may post them, but we don't really do anything with them. But I encourage you to start to look at kind of what your life looks like in kind of a collage. So I was able to think of my office, and just was amazed at the type of work that we've done. This is just in the past year. You can stop by. Most of the people, several people in this room are in these pictures. And it really just goes to show you, by capturing every moment, the work that actually has taken place, the improvements that have taken place. And sometimes you need a visual, like pictures. And every picture is worth 1,000 words, to be up on your wall, much like when Tiffany Graham was talking about her artwork and publishing student artwork everywhere so that people can see it. You know, I encourage that we do a lot of this all across our district and in our classrooms as well. I also want to thank the community for our initiative, for having the zero inbox for our staff. I know that it isn't perfect, but I have been checking in with staff, and I think it has really helped over the breaks to, as I was just talking about, how our phones are so accessible all the time. And we're always looking at them, and every time an email goes off. And I just want to thank you. This is a bigger gift than I think that people think. And it's really healthy for our staff to be able to get away, and a break is important, and people come back stronger if they have that opportunity to recharge. So I just want to thank the community. I know that it's not easy to do, but just thank you for those that played along, and I think it did, it did help our staff overall. So one thing, in the last six years I've been in the district, is the opportunity for students to select a kosher option for lunch. And so through our wellness committee with Mr. Margot, Dr. Horvath, several parents, Heather O'Meier, we now have an opportunity to listen to our community and actually take that information and do what we can to put the plan together to see it through. And the first time in six years that this has actually happened with ordering kosher food for our students is a reality, and it started today. And if you order by Tuesdays, every Tuesday, you can order kosher meals for the entire week. I loved that our Board of Education had a chance to sample meals before break to see if this is a vendor that was reliable and worthwhile. I'm glad that we did that. The food was excellent. But it started today, and we had, we have 245 kosher meals today. And that's pretty amazing, to do that right out of the gate. It's the first day, and we have 245 people that have been requesting kosher meals. And we're pretty excited about that. So I want to share that with you. There's a lot of hard work that goes in this behind the scene. Anytime you're doing some sort of special, special meal, special offering is in addition to a lot of the work that we're doing. But I'm super proud of this effort. And I want to thank our board and our wellness committee, and Heather, and for our community for trusting us, because I think this is the type of progressive activity that we like to see. This gentleman may look familiar to many people in the room. This is Ross Zabo. He was a keynote speaker of ours at our opening day presentation. And many people were very happy with his presentation. People reconnected with what he had to say about mental health. He is kind of the powerhouse, the guru in the area. He's hard to get, he's hard to book, because he is also, you know, has a full-time job as the wellness director for the Geffen Academy. But we were to get him to come back. He had a very good experience here, and he's looking forward to coming back. We're excited that he will be back on Thursday, and BVMS will be hosting Mr. Zabo when he comes back for a parent university at 6:30 on Thursday. So I welcome everyone to please come out. You will be afforded a really great opportunity as a parent. As a keynote speaker for our staff, he connected with so many people that I already know parents will walk away very, very happy and satisfied a Thursday night presentation. So we're very excited about that. Want to thank the Matthew Silverman Foundation for funding our speaker, BVMS PTA for hosting and providing some treats afterwards. But I look forward to seeing as many people as possible. Love to pack that theater to see Mr. Zabo. It's at Beverly Vista Middle School this Thursday, 6:30. Great. Also, something really exciting, one of my favorite shows of the year with Ms. Finley is our dance company. And so that's coming up the first week of February, and I encourage everybody to come out for that, as well as our middle school dance show too, which will be later in the year. But we're really excited. This is a favorite event of the year. For the last several years, we've had a lot of discussion in our community about International Holocaust Remembrance Day. And I won't read the slide to you, but the General Assembly designated January 27th as International Holocaust Remembrance Day. And this has come up many times in our community. And so this is an opportunity for our classroom instruction, current events that are happening in our community and around the world, to find their way into our classroom. And so we are very excited to be able to share with you. I started to do a deeper dive and work with Mr. Seaman and our principals to find out a little bit more about what's happening with our curriculum. This is an annual day of celebration, where we honor 6 million Jewish victims of the Holocaust and millions of other victims of Nazism. This date, by many of our community members, from what I have found, also celebrate Yeshua, also in April. And so this is, by some members in our community, celebrated in January 27th, and also, again, in Laval or early May. And so I just want to share with you, I started to just do a little bit of a deeper dive to find, like, what were those touchpoints in some of our curriculum? And this is not an endless list by any means, because many of our teachers do such a great job of incorporating what's happening around the world into our classrooms. So that happens on a daily basis, and I couldn't possibly list and get all of those. So that happens on a daily basis, and I couldn't possibly list and get all of those. But I just wanted to share with you just some information about where, and this is for our secondary schools, that you can see that, that no matter what pathway students are taking, that there's always an experience where a student and teacher and classroom setting has an opportunity to talk about International Holocaust Remembrance Day and the Holocaust through different field trip we have, through different textbooks that we have, different readings that we have. And you can see up there that in every subject area, in every graduation requirement, which then touches every student going through our secondary schools, that they have this opportunity to learn about International Holocaust Remembrance Day. And also at the elementary school, you may remember last year when Ms. Leat Keynes came, and she did the Butterfly Project with us. If some people were at a tour with me earlier today, were able to see the work of what's happening at Hawthorne and Ms. Keynes and that Butterfly Project. And that's starting up again at Hawthorne. At Horace Mann, Horn is beginning to look at the acknowledgement of some of the work that is the project of the Butterfly Project through a poem. And so I just had a conversation with Mr. Bugbee today, and I wish we had longer today, because I just started to dive into this a little further, and how Hawthorne and Horace Mann are starting to look at Holocaust Remembrance Day and how that is being incorporated into our curriculum. The Holocaust Museum makes suggestions about sixth grade. We've had these discussions in fifth grade, and so we're exploring further options to make sure that what's happening in our community, what's important in our community, is being acknowledged and recognized in our classrooms. We are taking many tours, and I want to just do a shout out, because after almost 14 of being a superintendent, I've never had a Board of Education say, "I want to make sure that I'm able to see and hear for my own eyes what's happening before I cast a vote." And so it started in the Conheim, and several people in here may have watched us kind of walk through the Conheim together. We posted a tour because we were making decisions, and Mr. Haas and his team, and Mr. Karat, we walked through there, Mr. Ellis. And we were able to actually see some of the deferred maintenance, some of the things that needed to be done now. And instead of things being put off, what the tour provides is a hands-on, real-time experience where then board members can look at every, whether it was locker rooms, stairwells, we light fixtures, you know, they saw it all, and they asked about it all. And what's impressive, and for those of you that don't get to see the kind of behind-the-scenes type of work, that's not ever done. You know, most board members in other districts, certainly in my former districts, make blind decisions about what they vote on, what's important to them, and oftentimes rely on somebody else's information. And our board has not done that. They've chose to see it before they vote on it, before they have a discussion about it, and that's just really impressive. So I want to thank you. That then continues into the suggestion to start doing tours of our schools. And so we just set up two tours for each of our schools, an AM and a PM visit for board members to walk through classrooms, have things about teaching and learning. And for the very reasons that you're hearing tonight, having really purposeful discussions about the math curriculum and about the training that teachers are getting, because they're now walking through our schools, they're walking into classrooms, and it's really impressive that our board wants to actually see and be a part of something before they actually cast a vote on something. They want to know about it, and that's just really impressive. So we have some pictures here of some of our tours that we had. And we're about halfway done with our tours, but you know, sometimes they're a couple hours long with lots of questions. And teachers have welcomed us into their classrooms and just about every space in the school. And it's been a very valuable experience. And I'm going to tell you that it's much more valuable than I thought that it would be. And it's because I don't have to do the tour to be on the tour and listen. And I don't get that chance very often to just listen to the conversation. And so it has actually been more valuable for me than I thought that it was going to be. So this was a great suggestion, a great idea, and I thank you for giving up even more of your time to walk through our schools and ask the right questions so that you are truly in the know before making a decision. Something that we're going to be doing again, we did something that we really enjoyed doing as a cabinet. We call it Cabinet Chat. We did a few Cabinet Chats in each of our schools where my entire team will go into a school during lunch, and we have the opportunity to talk and speak with staff about any topic, and we're all there as a team. And sometimes we struggle getting to our schools with so much going on and a small team. So we value this experience. We have not had the opportunity to do this since pre-COVID. So we are excited, we're going to be back. I'll do a follow-up with you and share our visits with each of our schools. But we really enjoyed this before. It was a great way for many of us to put names with faces that we had not met before. And it's important for all of us to be in our schools and visible. So I just wanted to share that with you and look forward to doing a follow-up with you once we are finished. So here's something that has come to my day is, is something really interesting, is the increase of our staff members that are purchasing electric vehicles. And so, you know, as our staff begins to make wise choices, you know, we're now behind the curve, so to speak, when it comes to being able to help and provide electric charges for our cars. We know that, you know, it's charging anything right now with getting electricity is an area that is now plaguing school districts across the country, because it is for personal use. And so many school districts are ahead of us. And I don't like that very often to say that we're behind, but we are. And so I know that Mr. Haas and I are going to be working together with some staff members that have an electric vehicle, because we want to research, we're going to do a feasibility study first to see what organizations and companies that we can work with to bring in for our staff that drive a long way and depend on being able to use an electric vehicle. And I just want to share with you and certainly get any input that you might have on as we start to move forward in this endeavor. And we'll keep you updated with what we find out. First thing, as I mentioned, is the feasibility study to see where these kind of stations can go. And this would be a pay-for parking. So you see them up all over throughout the city, and that's what we're going to be exploring. So what we thought was, you know, kind of new and, you know, never really thought, or I certainly didn't, you know, that we would be in a place where, you know, our staff now needs some help. And a lot of our outlets we're experiencing, even though it says that it's appropriate for that outlet, is blowing the outlets. And so some of the daisy chaining of cords and, you know, things like that are a safety issue. And so staff, many staff now have come to me with help and kind of an SOS. And what can we do? Because we certainly don't want to discourage people from making this decision. But we also want to be able to be helpful, but also be sure that we are following all the appropriate laws for the type of funding that's necessary for charging vehicles. So we haven't really talked about it, but I wanted to let you know. This is a big desire of staff, and it's growing every month. We've got more and more people that are making purchases. So just wanted to share that with you. And then I've been giving regular updates about where we are with our principal update. You can see this is just an example, back in July, July 26th, when we made some really important decisions for our school district in moving Mr. Mead into the Executive Director of School Safety. And, you know, at that time, we made a decision, because it was later in the year, that we would have two co-principals. And I first want to state it was still the right decision. I'm proud of that decision. I'm proud of the work that Mr. Mead is doing in security despite the timing of this. And it couldn't have been done without two excellent co-principals in Ms. Decatrelle and Mr. Stewart. So I want to give them a shout out, because they've really have moved the school forward. They've taken this responsibility on, and I appreciate the work that they have put in and that they continue to put in. But want to remind everybody, we go back into July in this communication, is that we would do the nationwide search, and we have, and so we're now moving forward with where we are in the process. I will be sending out to you some information. It'll be a survey, I think it's important to get as many people, going to cast a wide net with a survey about what to look for in our next principal at Beverly Hills High School. And so that will go out later tonight. And there is a full process, you'll see this in the email this evening, because I realize that this is somewhat difficult. We have a very comprehensive process. We have been looking across the nation, we've really marketed the position. So I look forward to updating the board and our community where we are in this process. But I'm very transparent about what this process looks like, what the dates are, it's all right here so that you can see. There's no front runner, there's no, these are authentic interviews. I'm not even in the first round, because I don't want there to be any perception that the superintendent is picking somebody that he knows. I don't know, you know, the candidates that are moving from the first round into the second round. It's a very transparent process, and it's probably, not probably, it is one of the most important decisions that I will make, and then bring that recommendation to the board. It is that important. And so we have taken our time, it's, we're not rushing, and it's a very comprehensive process that will involve a lot of people, including our students, because it's really important that I get their feedback about their next principal as well. So I wanted to share that with you, and that email will be going out this evening. And I'm always happy to answer questions about that.
Let's do the questions first.
Great.
Colleagues, anything on Dr. Bregge's report? I'll start at that end. If you have to add anything, you can pass.
Well, thanks for your report, I think it's really fantastic. First, I just want to thank you for setting up the Conheim tour and the school tours. I know that I've been on you about, you know, following up and trying to make that happen. And I really appreciate it, and I think it is worthwhile. And I think unfortunately, I missed the school tours this week due to a death in the family. But I'm really looking forward to the school tours and also another follow-up tour through Conheim, so along with the high school. So I do think it's really valuable, and I'm really looking forward to it. So thank you for taking the trouble to set that up. And I'd like to thank Pam as well, because I know she's also been coordinating it. So I appreciate it, and everyone else that made it happen and attended the tours. So thank you.
We love it, thank you.
Yeah, and I hope that we continue that. I also love the Cabinet Chats. Since I've been here, I haven't heard of this, so I think that's a fantastic idea. I'm really looking forward to hearing the feedback from that. It's wonderful that you're doing that, and that sounds great. The electrical, the electric vehicle chargers, I'm not surprised to hear that. I think it's also an initiative with the city from their Sustainability Committee. So I think that the timing is right, and I'm really interested to hear what some of those solutions are. It also ties back to a request that I made about wanting as a board to review our plans for the modernization plans, because it's been so long since those plans were done. We've never sat down since I've been on board to actually go through and look at those plans from a, conceptually, like what the plans are in terms of why we're doing what we're doing and what the different, like what's in the building C and what office space, and how are we using that space? And, you know, have things changed since that time that we should, that we now have still, we still have time to make those changes, to make the spaces even more usable to us? And an example of that is the electrical charging vehicles. The other would be solar panels or the shade structures or, you know, whatever spaces, how they're using the space in terms of the fields. And, you know, do those things still make sense to us? So I really would like us to have a dedicated time to review those plans as a board to just, you know, really understand why we're doing the changes that we are still doing, and if there's things that we want to tweak at this point that we, if we can, that make it more useful for our students moving forward, because a lot's changed since then. I mean, even between then has been COVID. So I'm curious about that. I'm curious if there's a way to make even, my first thought, and this isn't the place to say this, but, you know, even the parking structure at BV, maybe making that a electrical vehicle, electric vehicle charging place where employees can park there, and then you can shuttle them, or if there's transportation to move them to and from their car and make it more centrally located, and maybe that's more efficient from a budget standpoint. But it's just a thought. And that's really it, thank you, it's nice to be back.
Thank you.
Anybody else?
Yeah, just want to say thank you for your report, Dr. Bregge. And also, it's been a big couple of weeks for us, and I thank you so much for my board university time, waiting on the tours to give me the opportunity to attend. My colleagues calling me, emailing me, texting me to make sure, you know, I'm acclimating, how am I doing? And of course, your cabinet and the principals. I really appreciate the warm welcome across the district. And it's just been a great couple of weeks to, you know, get in touch with everyone. And I'm so, you know, what a great report, and I'm so excited for the year to come. So thank you, you know, to our entire community.
Thank you for putting in those, those were two full, long days. Thank you for putting in that time and effort.
One last thing I didn't get to mention is I love your This Is Us wall. I haven't seen it yet, but just from, as a background, I really love that you're celebrating all the work that we've been accomplishing as a district. I just think it's wonderful, and I can't wait to go look at it.
Thanks.
It's a great idea.
I was going to say the same thing about that, that I was really looking forward to it. I know that you took your winter holiday this year, it did not go away. And I know that you have some holiday vacation deserving, but your dedication to the district shows beyond belief. I mean, just beyond whatever that, how much it means to you, and so that you took the time and you didn't go away. You had so much things, so many things to attend to, and I was very impressed by that. And I want to thank you again for your very comprehensive report. I would like to just make a comment about the tours, which I have enjoyed. I've been on three of the four schools so far, so I've had a chance to see them. And, you know, if anybody knows the districts and the schools so far, anybody who wouldn't need to go on the tours would be Mrs. Marcus. But I was first and foremost to sign up. I feel that they are still valuable, no matter what's happening, to see what's going on, to meet the teachers, the new teachers, the ones that I don't know, the ones that I do know. And it was very, very, very enlightening, and I really enjoyed them. And I want to thank you for setting them up. And I think that Mary should be congratulated for offering or making that suggestion. But I'd also like to suggest that maybe after everybody's had a chance to attend all of the schools, we might sit down together and talk about some of our collective thoughts in a study session or something about what we saw, what we observed, and share with each other, because we all see things through different eyes. And it might be something that... And it might be something that, and then last but not least, I would love to compliment you on, and the school district, on what we're doing on the Holocaust. Because so many times I've heard in the community, well, what do you do about Holocaust? What are we doing? I don't know what we're doing. We never do anything. And I have to point, and you pointed out so vividly and so explicitly tonight, that this is a big part of our community and we do observe it. And it's not something we let go by lightly. So I want to thank you for assuring our community that we do something and we are on top of keeping the Holocaust alive in Beverly Hills.
I also want to commend you, Dr. Bregge, for, your reports are always very sensitive in looking at different needs in our community. But this time, you know, all the way from the electric chargers that are, you know, in need and very timely, but also of course, the, the offering of the kosher food. I myself am not kosher, but I wish I could be. And I, I really do think that it is a helpful way to be. And I, I love that we have answered a need in our community for sure. And of course, the International Holocaust Remembrance Day, which is something that is an uncomfortable thing to discuss and to learn, but it reminds us that much of our history is uncomfortable. And as we get closer to looking at more intense issues of our curriculum, I hope that we all can remember that sometimes the most horrific and uncomfortable things that have happened in our history are perhaps the most illustrative and illuminating for our children as we learn and as they grow. But thank you for your report and thank you for your sensitivity to all of the needs in our community.
Thanks.
Thank you, Dr. Bregge. Is the list of that Holocaust education list, is that available now for people? Because it was a lot to digest.
Yes, what I normally do at this time was, is send this presentation to Ms. Krausauer and she will put that up on the agenda.
Okay, so I do encourage everyone, if you have a second, take a look and read through how our district is addressing this particular issue and remembrance of that day. It's quite extensive.
Okay, so I just want to end with just kind of a handoff to you and your report where I know that you're going to be focusing on instructional initiatives. I think with the work of the strategic plan and then moving to many of the conversations you heard tonight, to focusing on teaching and learning in the classroom is going to be a new highlight for, under your presidency. So looking forward to that.
I'm very excited about this. I don't know if that graphic has been sitting up for the last 10 minutes, but I'm getting a little sick of looking at myself. So the first episode of Now No One Knows is in the can, as they say. It's actually sitting right here on this terabyte drive. Unfortunately, because of the holiday yesterday, we had no time to transfer it correctly to the KBEV folks, so it could be premiered properly. I could share it with you, but the, it loses a lot of resolution and sound quality. And I don't want to do that. It's a disservice to the teacher that volunteered to be first up on this, which is Sue Jovetic. As you can see by the graphic, it's still, hint, hint, I'm still up there too long. The, the, I have, thank you. There you go. This was such an exciting thing to do. I had spoken about it in December. I took my, my camera, my, borrowed my sister's little tripod and went out and shot for a little bit with Ms. Jovetic. I have three more teachers next week to work with and I have some lined up in February. I actually am going to need to take a break and get these edited because it takes me quite a while between everything else to edit these. And unfortunately, I'm not adding CGI to make myself look younger. I wish I learned how to do that because that would be beneficial. But I am not Harrison Ford, so. The, the first episode, which should premiere hopefully in the next day or so, there'll be a link for it. And I think what we're going to do is I'll just discuss it quickly at the board meetings and, and kind of tease everybody and you, everybody can watch it at their leisure. I don't want to take up board time doing that. But it will be out there and it will be out there in perpetuity. There'll be fun, exciting things. I did do physiology this past week and I learned things. The, I could say so much about Ms. Jovetic and her teaching style and her love of the students and her focus on wellness of the students at the same time as learning the subject matter. And her ability to not steer completely away from the idea of memorization as a tool for teaching and really stay on learning, learning the, the information almost for life. Because she taught me stuff and the way she taught it to me, I'll never forget it. And that's, that's the kind of teaching I appreciate. That's what I'm going to focus on in this series. And hopefully I will do as many as possible, as many as teachers volunteer to do it. But like I said, I have at least a half a dozen already scheduled just to get started. And it's very exciting to be inside the classroom. Everything we do here in this district happens inside the classroom. All the greatness, that's where it begins, that's where it's born. So I wanted to bring the focus back to that. This, this poor district has been rattled with so many outside distractions over the past decade. It was, I thought it's time as though subside to bring things back into the classroom. And, and I know that President Wells during her tenure did an amazing job bringing the community back into the district and connecting the, the district to the community. And now I want to connect the community to the classroom and, and see what's going on inside and how effective and wonderful our teachers are. Not, not for any other reason than so the community can understand why we really are a terrific district and we have such wonderful things to offer across the board. Mr. Glass, I haven't heard back from you yet. Ah, he's hiding from me. Okay. Anyway, so I look forward, so look for that to premiere. There might be a link on our webpage, but something will go out and everybody will be able to watch it. But from, for my part of it, if I was ready, if not for the holiday yesterday, this, we would have had time to get this thing posted properly. So thank you, colleagues, for indulging that for a moment and we shall move on. Moving on to Personnel Services, item A. I would like a motion?
Make a motion, oops, got changed. I make a motion to approve the other post-employment benefits.
No, 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 we're on, we're on 10A.
10A.
10A, a resolution for 2022, 2023 dash 010 regarding release from temporary certificated positions.
I'll second.
Thank you. Any questions? Okay, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye, opposed? Motion carries. Thank you very much. Moving on to 11.
I'll move for the approval of the Post-Employment Benefits GASB 75 Actuarial Report for the fiscal year ending June 30, 2022.
I'll second the motion.
Thank you. And colleagues, do we have any questions on this?
Sure, I'd like to hear from Raphael. If you could just speak about the, what GASB 75 is for our community so they understand what exactly it is that we're looking at this year on the actuarial, actuarial report. And just give a little background for that and what we can anticipate for this coming year when we do a new evaluation.
Sure, thank you. And good evening, Ms. Margot, Dr. Bregge, board members, community. Sure, I'll go ahead and give a brief presentation here. I'm just going to go ahead and share my screen. Hopefully I do this right. And I just have to, one second while I go to the present mode. Okay, it's not showing there. Oh, there it is. Okay. All right, so what is the GASB 75 report? You know, that's, that's a question that I, that I, I heard. And so just wanted to talk briefly about that. So it's required by GASB, the Government Accounting Standards Board, to improve accounting and financial reporting by the state and local governments for post-employment benefits other than pension. And that's what OPEP stands for, Other Post-Employment Benefits. This valuation report can be for many purposes, but mainly it's for accounting and funding your plan and making decisions based on that. And the report is focused on accounting information, but includes also some limited information about plan funding. So different options that you could do with OPEP. And so it's a, it's important enough to where the Government Accounting Standards Board decided, hey, this needs to be reported separately and needs to be incorporated into a, a report. And so what the actuary does is that they look at the plan specifics, like the eligibility, who's eligible, what are the benefits? How much, how long is it for, depending on what each bargaining unit negotiates and, and where that's at. And so they make many assumptions about unknown future events. We don't know exactly what's, who and when will everybody retire, but we make assumptions based on unknown future events. And then they allocate the total expected benefit cost, which is the PVFB for each person to the years the person is expected to work. So as each year goes by, those liabilities for some people may increase, for others it may decrease, depending on, on where that's going in replacements. So, and it also determines the OPEP liability and the net OPEP liability. So OPEP liability, your total OPEP liability is what you're actually liable for. Your net is, includes your assets into that calculation. Especially if you have funded or pre-funded, then that reduces your OPEP liability and that's your net OPEP liability. And so this data reflects in your financial statements. And that impacts you in the future because then what happens is, depending on where you are, it calculates into your liabilities in your broader financial statements. So if you were to do a refinancing or go out for a bond or, or different events like that, it impacts that assumption. So there's basically three types of funding options. Most school districts do the first one, which is pay as you go, which they basically use, when you do that, the actuarial assumption that's used is the bond index assumptions. There's the other one is the pre-funding, which is using the actuarial determined contribution. You pre-funded the entire liability. So you could use the rate of return that your trust is saying they're going to get. So you basically deposit money into a trust, right? If you're fully funded, then basically you can use that rate of return that your trust is saying you're going to receive. So in our case, PARs gives us this rate of return. If we were fully funded, we'd be able to use that in the assumptions and that affects your liabilities. And then there's in-between. That's where we are. We are in-between and, you know, really most districts are pay as you go. Very few are completely funded and some are like us that are in-between. And so in-between, you use sort of an average discount rate between the bond rate and the trust rate. So some of the benefits, again, the higher the discount rate, the lower the liability. So that's, that's just the way the math works out in regards to assumptions for accounting. And, you know, it can offset the now lower liability by the trust asset value. So as your trust goes up and the rate of return that you're assuming your trust goes up, if you're fully funded, then you could assume that. If not, then you could do an in-between ratio for that. And essentially you're, you have improved benefit security, which is something that we all want in the future, as well as the cost of borrowing is improved as well. So you're, you're, you get better rates essentially, if you don't have as high liabilities. It's how much to fund. So, you know, basically unlike the CalPERS Pension Plan, pre-funding of an OPEP plan is not required. You don't have to do this, but it does help your, again, your financial statements, your long-term borrowing, and it just sets you up in a better way. So again, we are in that blended kind of discount rate. That's what we do at this district. So here you could see the actuarially determined contribution or the ADC for fiscal year 2022. So the first number you're seeing there, the 1.7 million, that is what the actuary said we should probably deposit if we wanted to be, you know, fully funded for the current year for, for that determined contribution amount. We've contributed $1.4 million. So there's a shortfall of about $326,000. That doesn't mean that we, we owe any money or anything like that. It just, it's just basically we didn't go up to the full amount. That's how much we fell short by. And essentially the percentage of the ADC contributed is about 81.5%. So we were almost at 100%, but, you know, to get to that 100%, we'd have to contribute more. And that contribution comes from general funds. So if you'd like to bring to, you know, the district to 100%, that means that you'd probably have to do more than 2% of your payroll that, that we're doing now. So as you can see though, it's something that, that the district is improving year after year. There's some years that were some anomaly years because of the way that, you know, COVID impacted financials and everything. But essentially we're seeing improvement from '21 to '22. Some of the most important changes, the net OPEP liability increased by about $2 million. It was only expected to increase by about half a million. And really the main reason why it increased was essentially the asset earnings were $1.1 million lower than expected in '21, '22. That's basically the main reason why you're seeing that difference. However, despite the sizable unexpected increase in the NOL, most of the change is deferred and it's, you know, been gradually put in for the five, next five to 10 years. And our actual statement of net position in our PARs account is only about $62,000 lower. And I've seen the recent monthly statements and it is gaining traction again. It's just basically, you know, that year where we all saw kind of the stock market decrease, this also went with that. And so it's also now starting to increase a little bit more. So, so the key items reported in the financial statements is basically, the one you want to focus on is your net OPEP liability. That tells you how much we're still liable for in the future. And then you want to look at any unexpected changes and, you know, what we're actually contributing in regards to, you know, retiree benefit count and how that's counting against the expense. So I know this might be a little bit hard to see from there, but basically it just shows again that in, and let me just move this here on my screen. If that might look a little bit better here. So, sorry, trying to move something on my screen. Okay, so the total OPEP liability in June, as of June 30th of 2021 was 17.9 million. And we had about 4.4 million in assets. So that reduced our, that to our net OPEP liability of 13.4 million. So that's the net OPEP liability. So with all the changes that happened in the year of '21, '22, our total OPEP liability was at 19.9 million. But we have assets of about 4.4 million. That's basically your PARs balance. And so your net OPEP liability is 15.5 million. So that's the difference between, you know, where we, where we started and where we're ending. So as we look at that, the OPEP contribution levels, we could see that in '21, '22, the recommended, or what we were expecting was about 1.4 million, which is what we did. In '22, '23, the, what we're expecting based on our assumptions is 1.5 million in contributions. And so if we wanted to actually get to the total ADC, we'd have to contribute 1.8 million. We're currently forecasting to contribute 1.5 million. So we're still short for next year. So next steps, we want to review the current budget adjustments and provide updates of the OPEP contribution as it relates to the actuarial determined contribution level. So do we want to increase that or not in the future? That's something the board will have to look at. But there is, again, the only place you can get these funds from is the general fund. And so we also want to begin to work for the '22, '23 OPEP actuarial evaluation. Basically the way this works, you have a, a base year and then the next year kind of goes off of the base year. We're in that second year. So now we have to start over and do a new valuation from, from the beginning to set a base year for, for the future. So that is about that, all I have. Any questions?
Thank you, Raphael. One question I have is, do you have any, any sense or anticipation for when they do the evaluation next year? That it would be markedly different from where we are today?
So as I mentioned before, I do see that our, that the PARs account has been performing better than, than it did last year. That's positive news for the district. But yeah, and we're hoping that continues. But with the way the economy has been going, I'm not sure how that's going to impact the, their valuations as well and, and their rates. So that's something that we'll have to look at with the actuarial. So, so that's something we have to do. We have to commit to, you know, we currently use McLeod Watts to do the valuation for us, the actuarial study. And so we have to work with them or someone that will help us with that.
When, we've been doing the 2% over the benefits contribution. I know that, that for a few years now, I know that there were a couple of years where we didn't. But then with the finance committee making that recommendation, we've been consistent with the 2% contribution over and above. Do you foresee us having a problem with continuing that into the next year?
So we do have some projected deficit spending and that is something that will have to be explored, right? You, there's different things that you can do with the amount of funding that we receive. And that's something that as we build our budget, it's one of the considerations that you'll have to look at. Do you want to continue the 2%? If you don't do that, then that impacts your net OPEP liability. And then that impacts your general operations for the future. Any sort of borrowing that you do, then it becomes more risky for an investor to be able to, to invest in the district because of that. So it does have impacts on the other side. So it's kind of, we have to weigh that, but there is deficit spending on the horizon for next year and the current year. And so it's something that, all things considered, we do want to look at. But as of now, you know, that's maybe something that we, that we evaluate.
Right, I know it's been a very strong recommendation from the I know it's been a very strong recommendation from the Finance Committee that if at all possible, we continue with that contribution over and above so that we can try and get this funded. So, thank you for that. And thank you for this report.
Sure. And just one more thing, if you keep those contributions, it has, as you all know, it has a compounding effect. So the more you can do, the better it is. The earlier you could do it, the better. But at the same time, you do have the other financial obligations.
We have choices to make. Yes. And the actual trust itself, over the long term, is going to balance out, I would suspect, with PARs. So even though we're down this year, over the long term, that will gain back what it lost.
Yeah, it's been an average, I believe, when I looked at it, it was about 6% average.
So I think that's pretty solid and strong. I mean, that's a very reasonable expectation for return.
Yes.
Thank you.
Sure, thank you.
First, thank you for answering all my many dozens of questions. I really do appreciate it a lot. Second, when you say deficit spending, you mean notwithstanding that we have a significant reserve, right?
Yes. So when we talk about deficit spending, we are strictly speaking about what the difference between the revenues that you receive minus the expenses that you expend. That doesn't take into account your reserve. So, if you received $100 million in revenue, and you spent $105 million in revenue, you're deficit spending by $5 million. But you might have a reserve, right? And so if you have a solid enough reserve, you can absorb deficit spending. The danger is, when you deficit spend and you make it a trend, you deplete your reserves, and then you become, you get into trouble, into fiscal... You approach fiscal insolvency. So it's something that you want to avoid as best as you can. Some years, it's unavoidable because you might be spending down some funds that you received from the previous year. So you have to deficit spend, in some of those occasions, depending on how you did the accounting. But for the most part, you want to avoid deficit spending so that you continue to have a solid reserve.
And then, are you going to provide us some kind of a presentation so we can better understand our deficit spending and where we go from here?
Sure. So at the first interim, we spoke a little bit about deficit spending. And we could definitely speak to that at the second interim report. Because when we look at deficit spending, we also look at, at any given point, we're looking at really three years of data at least. We're looking at the current year, looking at what we're doing in the current year. But we also make assumptions for the next fiscal year and the other out year. So we look at, at all times, we're looking at three years. I personally also look at the previous year, and I look at, and I try to do the five years. That's what I try to do. But we're legally required to do the current year and the two years out. So that's what we do. And so we'll present that information. Now, keep in mind, those are all assumptions, right? They can change very drastically depending on what happens with local governments and things that happen in the economy.
As well, Rafael, we had, in the past, we've had a budget study session when it comes time to do the budget for the next fiscal year. So I'm not sure if that's scheduled, or we have an idea of when that would be, but I would recommend that we continue with that, where we have a board study session to review what that budget is before it's brought forth for approval.
Sure.
Thank you very much for that. Very understandable. The question that I had, I think, is somewhat answered in that I was trying to understand, and the fact that you gave a comprehensive explanation of everything really helped me a lot, because we spoke about it. So, we are, according to what we see right now, we'll probably be about $326,000 in that short. If we, all assumptions for the, is that what you're basically saying?
To meet the recommended actuarial contribution amount? Yes. That's, we were short. I think it was like $260,000 for last year.
I don't remember that number. I just know I wrote down, and you mentioned the same number just now.
Yes, yes.
I'm curious to know, how does, when we offer an early retirement incentive, figure into this total picture? Because they get benefits and so on. How does that figure into this picture?
So, when the actuarial looks at our data, they actually look at current employees. They look at all the employees of the district, and they make projections based on, well, if this employee stays with the district for the next 20 years, this is what's going to happen. So they make that assumption. Whenever we do an early retirement, what happens is, we also give that data to the actuarial, and then they update all of their assumptions based on the, what we did with an early retirement. So it does impact your liabilities though, because then it accelerates what would have been the process before. So now you're, most likely, what ends up happening is your net OPPIB liability probably increases. You'll see like a sharp increase in one year, but then it kind of flattens out as time goes on. Don't quote me on that, I'm not an actuarial, but that's typically what I've seen happens. But again, it ends up flattening out. But that's why you want to have this actuarial study to see where you're at.
Thank you very much for your report. Very well done.
Sure, thank you.
Nothing to add? Thank you for that.
Sure, thank you.
Thank you, Rafael. Pam, do I have a motion on this yet?
Yes, you do.
Great, great. Thank you very much. There's no other questions? All in favor?
Aye.
Aye? Opposed? Thank you very much. Motion carries. Thank you, Rafael.
I'll make a motion for the ratification of an agreement with the Environmental Audit Incorporated for the Land Use Covenant Documentation at El Rodeo School.
I'll second.
Thank you very much. Are there any questions on this one? Seeing no questions? All in favor?
Aye.
Aye? Opposed? Motion carries. Thank you very much. Item 12B.
I'll make a motion to authorize partial release of retention, 50% to ARB Incorporated for services related to the water line break at the former Veneco facility at BHHS.
I will second the motion.
Thank you very much. Mrs. Wells, do you have a question?
I did. I actually would like to ask Rafael.
Sure.
Great. I know that everyone knew about that we had the water break, and that there was the cleanup from ARB, and that now they're mobilizing. They're remobilizing. So if you could just explain that a little bit, and just so everyone understands what's happening here.
Sure. So essentially, the work that we had initially anticipated that was going to potentially happen was that we would have to backfill that site with soil. But in order to do that, we had to take out all of the cement, a bunch of different things. And when we were looking at just some estimates, initially, they were in the, like, maybe $2-$3 million range, or somewhere around there. But then what ended up happening was, because of the restrictions of earth-moving activities, it really pushed up that projection and all the other requirements that would have been associated with those restrictions. It could have cost the district upwards of $10 million very easily. What I mean by restrictions was AQMD, it basically has a restriction as to when we can move, when we could perform earth-moving activities that would have drastically impacted construction and all these other things. Well, recently, it was brought up in one of our construction meetings that, well, why can't we just place soil over this? Like, why do we have to do all this work? And well, we were able to, along with Will and Fonder Salari, we all kind of came together. We asked Environmental Audit, and they wrote up a technical memorandum. They sent that over to DTSC, which is the Department of Toxic Substance Control. You guys know that, right? And so they were able to look at it. They asked us for more information. We replied. And we just recently received approval to just go ahead and backfill with soil. So that is a huge win for us. We were very nervous about how we were going to do that work, and how it was going to impact not only the cost, but the delay in construction. And so very happy that, as a team, we were able to come together and get that done, and that approval. And so we're excited about that.
Thank you so much for explaining that. I think that, you know, this is just another example of the great work with Fonder Salari and Will Karat and yourself. I know that prior to this, that this was a big unknown when we were trying to figure out how we were going to move forward. I know when we were working with TCDS that this was an unknown that was going to be potentially a huge cost, as you said. It could be upwards of $10 million. I know that you were working with the city and trying to see if there was ways in terms of scheduling, how you could minimize those costs. And I think you found the best possible result. So I just want to congratulate you for saving the district upwards of $10 million. And thank you for doing that.
Thank you. And I just want to give credit to, where it's due, with Will and all his support in getting that done, as well as Fonder Salari. It was really a group effort, in the direction of Dr. Bregge, and just, you know, all of us kind of stepping up. And I appreciate Dr. Bregge as well. He helped us coordinate some things with the city. It was really a big joint effort, so thank you.
Well, I think that's great. I think it shows that the restructuring is working under your leadership, Dr. Bregge. So thank you.
Anything else?
I was just going to, that was a question that I also had. And I would like to just say that, so totally, $64,898 was 50% of what we're releasing, the money for that, and holding back the other half till they're finished. Is that the way I understand that correctly, then? For that particular project? So it's going to cost about that amount of money?
Sure. Let me have Mr. Karat just come in and explain that. He'll explain that better than I can. Thank you.
Good evening, and thank you for allowing me to speak. Yeah, so this agenda item specifically is to release 50% of the retention that was owed to ARB. Basically, there's code that allows us to do that when there's been a pause in the work. And also, if they've been over 95% complete with their construction, and they are. We basically only have a few remaining demobilization efforts that need to be done on the site, and then they'll be 100% complete. So, just so we're not delaying that retention payment any further, we want to release 50% of it now. And then the remaining 50% after the notice of completion is filed.
Have we started to fill yet at all? And then we haven't started to fill yet?
No, we haven't started that operation yet.
Thank you.
You're welcome.
Thank you very much, Will. Okay. All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Terrific. Motion carries. Item C.
Exactly.
I will move for the approval of the rental agreement with Sterling Venue Ventures for the Sevan Theater and Kinetic Lighting Corporation for the Beverly Hills High School Dance Concert.
I'll second.
Any questions on this one? Great. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye? Opposed? Thank you. Motion carries. Item D.
I will move for the authorization for the release of retention for Pro West Constructors' contract for work under Amendment Number 7.
I will second. Any questions on this one?
Yeah, can they get someone to just quickly explain so the community understands the...
Amendment 7?
The amendment.
Thank you.
Hello again. So Amendment 7 was an amendment to the Pro West contract that was done well before Rafael and I were here. Basically, it was to allow Pro West to help us with the planning, pre-construction management, and design of the retaining walls that will be happening on the south side. They've completed that scope of work, and therefore, we'd like to release the retention.
I have questions about that. And I may be confusing this with maybe Amendment 8. I believe at one point, they were ahead of schedule on that work. And so, they had, not ahead of schedule, but they had remaining general conditions in that agreement. Was that not agreement Amendment 7? Was that Amendment 8?
That was Amendment 8, yeah. Amendment 7 did not include general conditions as part of that amendment.
Okay, thank you.
So it was just for the work.
All right. Terrific. Thank you very much.
You're welcome. Any other questions, colleagues? Great. Thank you, Will. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye? Opposed? Motion carries, 4-0. Dr. Stern stepped out for a second. Thank you. Okay, moving on to 13A.
I'll make a motion for approval of Resolution 2022-2023-11, continuing authority to hold virtual meetings pursuant to AB 361.
I will second that.
Thank you very much, Mrs. Wells and Mrs. Marcus. Any questions? Terrific. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye? Opposed? Motion carries, 4-0. And discussion on the commendation plaque. Michael, do you want to start with that? Or should I turn it over to my colleagues who put this on the agenda?
We can certainly start wherever you want to. I can just share with you that I know that there is a lot of interest in the plaque. We spent a great deal of time looking at plaques all around our school district. There doesn't seem to be one exact format. Each one's a little bit different. But the board has made it clear to me that they would like to have a conversation about the plaque, about the names that are on the plaque. And I'm certainly open to this communication, as well as what our future processes will be when it comes to the plaques, and how we bring that to the board, what fashion that happens. And I'm open to some suggestions on how to improve it.
Mrs. Wells, would you like to?
Sure, I'll begin. I asked for this to be on the agenda because it, you know, I was surprised to see that the plaque was just placed and put up, and we hadn't had any conversation about it. B1 and B2 have been completed for some time now. We've had many conversations about B1, B2, about construction, how we're moving forward. And so for the plaque to be, to have been ordered and planned and made, and then installed without any conversation, be it through our board communication or otherwise, I was surprised to see it on there. So I just feel that, you know, the modernization bond funds, there's so much behind this, there's so much effort and work that's going into that. And so for the plaque to be placed without any conversation with the board, without any board input, I don't think that's correct. I think that we should have a board conversation around that. I personally don't have issue with the names that were placed on there. I do have, in terms of the board members that participated and working on this and/or administration, I have questions around putting the bond manager or program manager on this plaque, especially given some of the history that we have and information we're finding out. I don't think that that's... I find that, quite frankly, that it could be offensive to our community and taxpayers. So I think that that's controversial, and I wouldn't recommend doing that. And I'm not certain that I've seen that anywhere else, except for having seen it, recalling, once this happened. I recall very vaguely that it may have been on a board communication where you posted photos of a reconfiguration plaque that was placed at the schools. And that was before my time, so I didn't know that we ever had a discussion about that. And given that you can't find any meeting minutes or conversation with the board about the plaques, I'm curious how that was decided as well, as to what names would be put on that and why that would be put on in that way. So I would also question those plaques as well, because I think that there's question around that. And I think it deserves a conversation with the board.
I can answer just the last question about that, because I started to ask some of my team that was here. And there was some conversation that those were brought, like the draft form of that for reconfiguration was brought to a board meeting. It's before a board meeting started, but that information was shared. So for the reconfiguration plaques. This one was not. This one was, this latest one was, I was following the Horseman plaque lineup.
Right. But Pro West is on there as a contractor. We don't have a construction management on that one. So I just, that's my question. That's what I have. I personally don't think that that's appropriate. I'm curious what the other board members think. So I had two issues. One is that it wasn't brought to the board. And I think going forward, we should have these go to the board. And the reconfiguration plaques, I don't know when those were ordered, but it must have been before my time, because it wasn't on since I've been on the board. So I just opened that up to the other board members. But I definitely stand firm that I don't think that TCDS should be on that plaque.
So, I'm sorry.
Are you suggesting that it be revised kind of to mirror the Horseman example that we were provided? Or to not include, you know, to simply include admin and Board of Education members?
I definitely think the Board of Education and admin should be on there. The question of the architect, I think it depends. And so I wouldn't, I don't, you know, I'm certainly open to hear what people think about that. This is, these are old buildings that have been modernized. I think that they could be considered somewhat architecturally important for our city, given, not necessarily from the architect for here, certainly for El Rodeo more so. But I don't know that it's architecturally significant in that way, know that the, it's architecturally significant in that way, but because the buildings are so significant to us and our city and the history of our city, there's the original architect that designed those buildings, and then to have a modernization, it may make sense to have the architect on for the modernization as a matter of record. So I'm not opposed to the architect being on, but I don't know what that hardened past. I think that's why we should always have a board discussion for each of these, because I think there is some nuance to each of the buildings.
Judy, did you want to add anything?
No, that was, I was just curious to know if there was a suggestion, or you seem to just simply be open to the discussion.
Right. My suggestion is to remove TCDS, and to, I'm open to leaving the rest as is.
Do you have a B1, B2, newest one?
Mm-hmm.
Rochelle, did you have anything?
No, I just would like to echo Mrs. Wells' words. I was very surprised when I was, when it came up and that was told that this was the plaque. I thought to myself, when did we discuss this? And I was unaware that we had discussed it. I didn't know whether we were supposed to discuss it, but it seemed to me that for such a monumental thing, that we probably should have discussed this, and that was what I then called a former board member to ask if they had ever discussed, and they said that they had on another previous plaque. So I concur with Mrs. Wells, and I really feel that it should be a decision that we should all make collectively, and I don't think we did. And that's the only thing that I was upset about, is that we had not talked about it, and we hadn't discussed it, and it was up and it was a done deal. And I feel that as the taxpayers vote for us to represent them, that we should have had some say in how it, how the plaque was formatted or how it was done. That was my thinking.
I understand.
I, that's it.
Mandy?
I mean, I think in principle, to discuss these things, you know, since this will stay in perpetuity, it is a good idea to talk about it. I'm not sure if at this point I think it should be taken down or revised. I don't, I don't know if I'm feeling that way. That's all I have to say.
Yeah, I would concur, and I understand, Mrs. Wells, and I think that going forward, we should bring these plaques to the board and vet them out completely before they're produced. I agree with Mandy. I don't, I don't think we should be spending more money revising this one, but I do recognize there also should be consistency, whether we list architects or contractors or what. If, you know, one, if the Horace Mann one lists the architect and the contractor, the high school lists the bond manager. So there's no consistency. So there should be consistency moving forward, and I'm okay with making sure any new plaques come in front of the board for approval before being produced.
I mean, if there's a motion on the table, I'm happy to support a change so that we create that consistency now.
It's a discussion item only, Judy, so we can give direction. There's no motion.
Okay. Well, I would love for TCDS to be taken off of that personally, so can we give that instruction to look into that or to make a motion?
I would like to give direction to revise that plaque, to remove TCDS.
Great. I concur.
As do I.
So there's three board members that agree with that, look into taking TCDS off of that plaque. Okay?
Thank you very much.
Okay. Ms. Kraushauer, any public comment?
No.
Okay. I don't even understand that, but I will keep quiet. Okay.
Can I make a comment on this, though? Mr. Margul. There is a comment in...
Comment on what?
On the board comment, on board comment. Comment about that.
We're talking about public comment.
Yeah.
On public comment.
Yeah. It is mentioned in the information for this board meeting at night, that the articles that we can call, and if anybody wants to discuss, or we give a comment on an item that's called, let's say if we were calling up to talk about the plaque, someone could come at that point and make a comment, if there's a person who has identified that that's what they want to speak about. So the comments that come at the end are comments that are just maybe in general or something like that, that don't, are not applied specifically to an item on the agenda. And I just would, I'd like to point out that public comment is accepted if it's relative to that item.
Right.
And so I just want to make that clear to everybody, so that, that people think, well, I always have to wait now till the end, but maybe I want to talk to about an item that was number halfway through, and they can, as long as it's identified to Pam at that time.
Thank you for that clarification. So colleagues, because of the sparing nature of meeting reports, I had asked Dr. Bregge to put them, instead of following his superintendent report, to put under communication from board members, because we all usually report at that time anyway. So I thought it would be an easier way to consolidate that, and that, and that way we also don't have too many reports in one section of the meeting. We kind of break it up. So it gets laborious at times. So if you do have any meeting reports, and in the future, you can certainly let me know beforehand, I can specify those specifically in the agenda, but if you do have any, now would be the time to make those as well. Like I know Lax is next week, Mary, so you won't have to report until the 31st on that one. Anyway, Alex, we'll start with you. Nothing? What a buildup. Okay. Mrs. Wells?
I don't have any meeting reports to report at this time, and I would ask that if we are going to have this moved to this area, that we continue to keep it called out as meeting reports as well, as a reminder to the board to report on those meetings, because I think the reason we place this is because we, as a board, were not being very good about reporting at meeting, from, reporting on meetings that we'd been attending. So this is a great, the reason we added it to the agenda was so that it would make it more purposeful for us to remind us as board members to report, so that we can keep everybody informed, so I think that's really important. But I see the reasoning for putting it into board comments.
And thank you for that suggestion, and I agree, and I think I would even go so far as to even add meeting reports, like health and safety, whatever. I'll put that on the agenda, so people know those are coming up.
I'd like to know about them first, though.
If you let us know when the agenda is, maybe, absolutely, we'll put them on.
And any other ad hoc meetings of that nature.
Absolutely.
I think it's great, because I do think it's been really helpful for all of us to stay informed.
Yeah.
I do, would like, I would like to request that we add to the, that we agendize for our next meeting, a discussion for the items that we removed from the agenda for this agenda, which was the reading of the mission and vision, and our BHUSD community spotlight, and the community, the communities, I mean, the community pledge, and then as well, the community spotlight. And the reason for that is that I just want to remind all of us that, you know, really how we got here and why this was placed on the agenda, and one of the reasons, and just taking from your words, Noah, about leading by example, is we talked about, you know, what is our mission and vision, and when, at the time, we were very much a divided community, and I, and I agree, I think that we've really pulled the community together, and it's been really effective, and we've all heard really great feedback about it. But the reason behind that was that, you know, we wanted to have, we wanted to, as a board, it's our job to, to set the mission and vision and then communicate that in a way that is effective, and that we get buy-in from our community about that, because it's, if we don't have buy-in from our community and community engagement around our mission and vision and the tone that we're trying to set, we're not going to achieve our goals as it relates to our strategic plan. And so I think all of these items that we placed on the agenda were very purposeful about addressing that. So we clarified and refined the mission and vision statement, so that now actually we're seeing and hearing people talk about educational excellence, whereas I think before we even talked about, if someone were to ask you what was the mission or the vision, nobody could even tell you. But by starting our meetings and refocusing that this is what our mission and vision is, and setting the tone with the community pledge, that without this tone, we cannot achieve those goals, I think we also at that time identified that if it doesn't start with us, then how can we expect our community to be adopting this and really buying into it? So I think that's why we included it in our agenda, and along the same lines, it was about bringing the community in and really strengthening the community, so that we, as a strategic plan item, we've, we have identified, we can't succeed without community engagement. How do we bring our community in and get them engaged? And that was the goal of the community spotlight, and still is. And so a perfect example of that is, we're talking about the Holocaust Remembrance Day and all the things that are happening at school, and how that not all of the community members feel connected to that or know that that's what's happening. And so part of that is our job to make sure that we're communicating it, but it's also bringing the community in to be part of it. So it's not just what's happening in the classroom, but what else, how can we bring our community to be part of it here? And I think that's a perfect opportunity where the community spotlight makes perfect sense, to have somebody share their story that's part of our community, the parent community or immediate school district. So the fact that we are only halfway into the first year of our strategic plan, I personally feel like this, there's not a reason to eliminate this from our agenda if we don't, since we're seeing that it's working and we're having such positive feedback for it. So to just eliminate it without a discussion or a reason why, I think is a disservice to us and to our district and for all the work that we've done to re-focus on the mission and vision and the tone and really building community this year. We're only halfway into the first year. I certainly think that if there's ways to improve on it, we should have a discussion and improve on it, and I'm open to all of that. And I'm certainly would, would expect that when we get to our planning sessions in June, July, that we would be looking at this again and saying, is this something that we would continue to do, or how do we continue to do that message to achieve the goal? The goal is focusing on and clearly communicating a mission and vision, and really getting to get the community, really inviting the community and increasing community engagement, because without that buy-in from the community, the teachers, the staff, the students, we won't achieve what our vision is, and that's our goal. So I would like to add that back to the agenda, so we can have a discussion.
We'll put that discussion on to the next professional official business.
Thank you.
On the next agenda.
Judy, any comments?
No, thank you.
Rochelle?
Well, since you asked for a board, I mean, a report, I did have a board report.
Fabulous.
Health and safety, they had an organizational meeting. The new chair of it is Lee Hillborn, and the new, trying to remember who, I think it's going to be, Felzenthal, is it Felzenthal, or is it one of the two of the ladies that I think are next in line? Felzenthal or Hannah Rubenstein. The report that was given by the police, the, first of all, the new, the man that usually reports, the captain that reports, has just been promoted, and he's now a captain, I think, or lieutenant. I don't remember which was which, but I remember he's the one that gives the report, and everybody was congrat, Rios is his name, I think, if I remember correctly, and he is the new, he's the new captain or lieutenant. When his report, he was talking about the fact that the real-time program that they have is providing them with a great assessment of crime and so on and things that happen, and he was really talking about how great it was. He also mentioned the menorah incident in which they were able to arrest after 20 minutes the perpetrators of the crime due to this type of real-time access to immaterial, and that crime has decreased during the year, which was, again, they're attributing it to the fact that they have this real-time program, that they can get things right away with all their cameras and what have you. The fire department report was that there were more calls this year than there were in the previous year, and more than half of all the calls are really the EMS for rescue types of things, and, and though not for emergency, emergency medical purposes. They had a talk about, they talked about the COVID for the 19, COVID-19, an update, they used to give an update on what's going on with that, and at that point, I did have to leave the meeting, but it was like already two hours, so they, I didn't get to see the end of the meeting. I, so that was my only...
And I think it was Captain Trejo.
Oh, Trejo, thank you, yeah.
Yes, I was able to sit in on those promotion interviews as a panelist with Chief Stainbrook, so.
Thank you for letting me know that. I didn't get, I don't hear his, you know, and I, I didn't know, couldn't get his name, but I, he's amazing. He comes every week and makes a report, and it's really wonderful. Unfortunately, I have to sit behind him, and I can't hear as well as I should be able to, so I get a lot of... So I would like to make a couple comments tonight about the meeting, and Mo, thank you again for a very efficient meeting, and welcome back to the Chair of Presidency. It's nice to have you back there.
Thank you.
I would like to talk about, to the student body out there, that is going to be talking about something that I found very interesting tonight, because it's going to lead into who I'm, somebody I'm going to congratulate. I have been on the board now for five years. I've sat with five different student board representatives. Every single one of them, in their college applications, have gotten their first choice. So I'm applying and asking you out there, if you want to be a student board representative, and you want to go to a good school, and you want to apply, there's the ray you'll get on. Join the school board. And I would like to congratulate Alex, because she's going to go, early decision, to a school I know well. She's going to go to Georgetown. And I would love to congratulate her on her acceptance to Georgetown, and I know somebody in my family who will be very happy to hear that, because he is a graduate of that school. So congratulations, Alex. All the best to you. I could, I'm beaming with pride as if you were my own daughter, and I just take such pride in the fact that you've, you've made it that, I'm thrilled, and congratulations.
Thank you so much, Ms. Margul. Congratulations. Thank you.
And, and a final word. I had a year or two with Cheryl Katz when I taught at Horace Mann. I worked with her, I knew her well. She was an unbelievable, she was a teacher's teacher. That's the best way I could describe her. She was amazing with the kids, but she was amazing with the subject, and she was such a lady, and she was, she worked so well with all the faculty members, never complained about anything. She, I really admired her tremendously, and I just am going to miss her. I know she retired a few years ago, and so I just want to share with you that I had the opportunity and the pleasure of working with Cheryl Katz. And I guess that's about all I have to say tonight. Thank you.
Congratulations, Noah. Very efficient meeting, and also I want to say Happy New Year to everyone. I will be attending the Human Relations Commission on Thursday, have more to report then. And also today, I enjoyed a great tour. Thank you to Ms. Kabev and to everyone who attended at Hawthorne, and it's a wonderful school, many different layers of success going on there, different ages, different ability types, all sorts of things going on, and I was really happy to be a part of that, so thank you.
Thank you, colleagues, for helping me run an efficient meeting. They, I know that they touched upon the Ross Zabo thing Thursday night. We were treated as the board and the staff to his presenting at the opening day, and kind of blew us away. So if you do have an opportunity to catch Mr. Zabo on Thursday night, please try to get to that. It's a, it's a terrific evening. Thank you, Kbev, of course. I don't want to forget to thank everybody from there and staff that stuck it out, and students that stuck it out tonight. And we will see you on January 31st. Meeting is adjourned.
Thank you.
Thank you, Noah. First meeting down.